Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for the honor and the privilege to serve as your mayor.
Ladies and gentlemen, our national anthem. It's my pleasure to call word at this ceremonial inaugural meeting of the 1979-1980 Council of the City of Mississauga, and I will now call upon Rabbi Englander of the Solell Congregation in Mississauga for the invocation. Rabbi Englander.
Normally religious scriptures do not enumerate a long list of what it takes to be a good leader. Rather they teach through example, presenting the heroes of their particular religious tradition as models for all human conduct. In that light, on behalf of the citizens of Mississauga, I offer the following prayer on behalf of the elected officials of our new city council. May they possess the faith of Abraham, who learned what was right and then set out to attain it. May they show the compassion of Moses, who cared for each and every one of his people. May they display the magnetism of the prophetess Deborah, who rallied her followers together for the common good. May they express the determination of Muhammad, who never abandoned his efforts even in the face of adversity. May they find the serenity of the Buddha, who always remembered to keep all things in their proper perspective. And if our elected leaders can achieve all these qualities, we pray that God in turn will grant them the wisdom of Solomon, so that their term of office may be one blessed with insight, with progress, and with harmony. Amen.
Your worship, honored guests, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Fraser Manders and I am most pleased and extremely honored to have been asked to be your master of ceremonies this evening. It's also my distinct pleasure to welcome you to this inaugural meeting of this council. In addition to the large audience we have in this auditorium tonight, these proceedings are being telecast and will be seen through the facilities of Cable 10 through Mississauga. And I want to extend on behalf of all here a sincere welcome to this viewing audience as well. You will have noticed from your program that there is a space there for a few remarks by the chairman. And I would like to take just a couple of minutes to try to establish the setting for tonight's ceremony. We have all seen on television the pomp and ceremony associated with the opening of Parliament, and we have heard described the medieval origins of that tradition. Few of us realize perhaps that the origins behind the ceremony we are involved in this evening probably predate the first Parliament in England and certainly its counterparts in France and in Belgium by several centuries. The formation of the towns and cities in Western Europe took place during the 10th, 11th, and 12th centuries, and it was without doubt one of the great revolutionary movements of our civilization. As trade developed in those centuries, towns developed, and they grew up around castles and cathedrals. In the inevitable conflicts which developed between the new immigrants to these communities, that is the merchants and the artisans, and the old inhabitants, the knights, the clergy, and the serfs, a new order of things was elaborated in Western Europe. In these medieval communities there developed a spirit of gain and enterprise. The free laborer and the man of independent trade detached the light from soil and from the authority of the Lord of the Manor. For the first time since the fall of the Roman Empire, we have here a group of people who are truly free, living in towns. It is curious that these people did not have to demand their liberty. It came to them quite naturally. It existed as a fact even before it was recognized as a right. To maintain this liberty and to have it recognized as a right, these townspeople had to establish defenses, create a new system of law and administration, and develop new trade regulations. To establish this new order of things, conflict and revolt were created between the old order and the new. The first such revolt being recorded in northern France in 1077, 901 years ago. Not even the great princes of Western Europe could prevent the success of this movement. When they realized that they had more to lose than to gain by opposing the movement, they tended to support it, and they granted the towns special freedoms, special laws, a less complex judicial system, and above all, a communal autonomy. By being involved in the affairs of their community and by readily assuming their responsibilities, the citizens of these towns jealously guarded and further developed their new way of life and their new freedoms. We now regard this spirit as the very essence of our Canadian democracy. This spirit was brought to these shores by the French settlers to Quebec in the 17th and 18th centuries, by the United Empire loyalists from the 13 colonies at the end of the 18th century, and by the great migrations from the British Isles and the other Western European countries in the 19th and 20th centuries, our immediate ancestors. If we are to maintain this spirit as the cornerstone of our democracy, it's important, imperative indeed, that we all be as much more active in and knowledgeable about the affairs of this community in which we live as it works out its solutions to its problems and continues to develop its unique identity in the years immediately ahead. Perhaps as we look to the future, the pageantry of this evening will recall to us the long-term development and maintenance of our urban way of life and of our municipal institutions. Thank you very much. Now it's my pleasure also at this time to introduce to you those who are on the platform. I would ask that you kindly withhold your applause until all have been introduced, and I will introduce them from my left around to my right. First, Mrs. Hazel McCallion. His honor Judge H. Ward Allen. His honor Judge William Sharp. Ms. Angela Bax. Mr. Ken Deere. Mr. Steve Mahoney. Mr. Ron Starr. Mr. Fred Hooper. Mr. Frank McKechnie. Mr. Larry Taylor. Mr. Frank Bean. Mrs. Margaret Marland. Mr. Harold Kennedy. Mr. Gordon Lassard. Reverend Earl S. Colter. Father Joseph A. Nolan. Reverend Earl C. Gerber. And Rabbi L. Englander. Ladies and gentlemen, your platform party. Now in addition to the honored guests we have on the stage, we have a number of people in the audience whom I would also like to introduce to you this evening. They are sitting here pretty well right in front. First of all, the honorable Tony Abbott. And I believe that we have three members of the Legislative Assembly from Mississauga here this evening. Mr. Bud Gregory. And Mr. Terry Jones. Not sure, is Mr. Doug Kennedy with us this evening? Mr. Kennedy is up in here. Mr. Lou Parsons, I believe has not arrived yet. Is Mr. Parsons with us? Not yet, okay. Mr. Terry Miller, who is the acting mayor of Brampton. And sitting in this same role, Mr. Ron Searle, outgoing mayor of Mississauga. Now I understand that a new chain of offices being used in the ceremonies this evening, and to bless this chain, I'll call upon Reverend Earl Gerber of the Trinity Anglican Church of Streetsville. Mr. Gerber.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The use of a chain as a symbol of honor and the badge of authority goes back at least to the time of the Jewish patriarchs. In the Book of Genesis, we find Pharaoh, king of Egypt, honoring a Hebrew exile by putting his signet ring on the exile's hand by tiring him in fine linen and placing a gold chain about his neck. Joseph was that exile, the second youngest son of Jacob, who fathered the 12 tribes of Israel. Over a thousand years later, virtually the same scene is reenacted in the land of Babylon with another Jewish exile named Daniel. He too is honored by a king, and as a sign of promotion to the seat of authority, has a gold chain placed about his neck. It wasn't until medieval times however, that mayors in Europe began to adopt the custom of wearing the chain as part of their badge of office. Somewhere along the line, silver was substituted for gold. I don't think just in the last decade when the price of the latter has skyrocketed. And distinctive insignia wrought in individual chains to link them with the geographic region of their location. So it is with this new chain, present, which we are here now to dedicate for the mayor of Mississauga and her successors as a symbol of honor bestowed upon them by the electorate and the badge of authority entrusted to the holder of this high office by him who holds the highest office of all. There are two passages of scripture which bear on these proceedings. One in the Old Testament, the other in the New. First, the old. "When one rules justly over men, ruling in the fear of God, he dawns on them like the morning light, like the sun shining forth on a cloudless morning, like rain that makes grass to sprout from the earth." The second from the New Testament. "And Jesus said to his disciples, 'The kings of the Gentiles exercised lordship over them, and those in authority over them are called benefactors; but not so with you. Rather, let the greatest among you become as the youngest and the leader as one who serves. I am among you as one that serves.'" Would you stand please? Let us pray. In the name of God, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Oh God of all the ages, architect and upholder of the universe, Father of Jesus and of those who obey you through him, we present this chain of office to you and ask your blessing on it and on all who shall wear it hereafter. Remind them of their accountability to you and of their responsibility towards the citizens of Mississauga. Give them grace to rule justly over others out of reverence for you and give them those special gifts of wisdom, patience, courage, and strength without which no one can rule wisely or well. May we, looking on this chain in years to come, remember this hour and all that is represented by this chain. Grant us a vision of this city as it can be by your power. A city of righteousness, where none shall wrong his neighbor. A city of modest plenty where poverty and evil shall be done away. A city of sisterhood and brotherhood where all success is founded on service and humility and honor given to nobleness alone. A city of peace where order rests not primarily on force but on the love of everybody for the common life and the well-being of all. Grant these things, oh Lord, we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I'm very pleased at this time to call upon His Honor Judge H. Ward Allen of the Judicial District of York to administer the oath of allegiance and the declaration of office to Mrs. Hazel McCallion. Judge Allen.
Mr. Chairman, Reverend Searls, Your Honor, Your Worship, Members of Council. Before proceeding to administer the oath of allegiance and complete the declaration of office of Her Worship Mayor McCallion, I want to express the honor that I feel has been given to me by Her Worship and the members of council of the City of Mississauga to participate in this important occasion. Your Worship, would you join me please? Using your own name in the office of mayor, would you read please, Your Worship, the oath of allegiance?
I, Hazel McCallion, having been elected to the office of mayor in the municipality of Mississauga, do swear that I will be faithful and bear the true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II.
Would you then please, Your Worship, read the declaration of elected office?
I, Hazel McCallion, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, execute the office of mayor to which I have been elected in this municipality, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any partiality or malversation or other undue execution of such office, and that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, as required by and in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act 1972. And I make this solemn declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Congratulations, Your Worship, and all best wishes.
At this time I would invite Mr. Ron Searle to come forward to present the chain of office to Mrs. McCallion. To administer the oath of allegiance and to take the declaration of office for each counselor, it's my pleasure to call upon His Honor Judge William Sharp of the Region of Halton. Judge Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am pleased to have the privilege of swearing in the newly elected council for the City of Mississauga. As each member of councils comes forward, I will administer the oath of allegiance to the Queen and the declaration of office. Would the counselors please come forward to be sworn, starting with Mr. Kennedy. And would you read the oath of allegiance?
I, Harold Kennedy, having been elected to the office of counselor in the municipality of Mississauga, do swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II.
And would you swear your declaration of elected office?
I, Harold E. Kennedy, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, execute the office of counselor to which I have been elected in this municipality, and that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any partialy or malversation or other undue execution of such office, that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, as required by and in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act 1972. And I make this solemn declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Sign the declaration. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Counselor Marland, would you swear the oath of allegiance, please?
I, Margaret Marland, having been elected to the office of counselor in the municipality of Mississauga, do swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II.
And would you also swear the declaration of elected office?
I, Dorothy Margaret Marland, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, execute the office of counselor to which I have been elected in this municipality, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any partialy or malversation or any other undue execution of such office, and that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, as required by and in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act 1972. And I make this solemn declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Would you sign the oath and the declaration? Councillor Frank Bean?
I, Frank Bean, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of Mississauga, do swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II.
Would you take the Declaration of Elected Office?
I, Frank Bean, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, execute the office of councillor to which I have been elected in this municipality, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any partiality or malversation or other undue execution of such office, and that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, as required by and in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act 1972. And I make this solemn declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
So would you sign the Declaration? Mr. Larry Taylor, would you take the Oath of Allegiance, please?
I, Larry Taylor, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of Mississauga, do swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II.
And the Declaration of Elected Office?
I, Larry Taylor, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, execute the office of councillor to which I have been elected in this municipality, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any partiality or malversation or undue execution of such office, and that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, as required by and in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act 1972. And I make this solemn declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Yes, would you sign the Oaths, please? Thank you. Mr. McKechnie, would you take the Oath of Allegiance, please?
I, Frank McKechnie, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of Mississauga, do swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II.
And the Declaration of Elected Office?
I, Frank J. McKechnie, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, execute the office of councillor to which I have been elected in this municipality, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any partiality or malversation or other undue execution of such office, and that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, as required by and in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act 1972. And I make this solemn declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
And would you sign the Oaths? Mr. Hooper, would you take the Oath of Allegiance, please?
Thank you, sir. I, Fred Hooper, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of Mississauga, do swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II.
And the Declaration of Elected Office?
Here goes my whole image. I, Fred H.S. Hooper, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, execute the office of councillor to which I have been elected in this municipality, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any partiality or malversion or malversation of other undue execution of such office, and that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, as required by and in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act 1972. And I make this solemn declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Would you sign the Declaration and the oath, please?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Starr, would you take the Oath of Allegiance, please?
I, Ronald Starr, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of Mississauga, do swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II.
And the Declaration of Elected Office?
I, Ronald E. Starr, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, execute the office of councillor to which I have been elected in this municipality, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any partiality or malversation or any undue execution of such office, and that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, as required by and in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act 1972. And I make this solemn declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Would you sign the oath and the Declaration, please? Congratulations, Councillor. Mr. Mahoney, would you take the Oath of Allegiance, please?
I, Stephen Mahoney, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of Mississauga, do swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II.
And the Declaration of Elected Office?
I, Stephen W. Mahoney, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, execute the office of councillor to which I have been elected in this municipality, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any partiality or malversation or other undue execution of such office, and that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, as required by and in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act 1972. And I make this solemn declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Would you sign the oath, please? And the Declaration of Elected Office? Thank you. Congratulations, Councillor. Mr. Dear, would you take the Oath of Allegiance, please?
I, Kenneth Dear, having been elected to the office of councillor in the municipality of Mississauga, do swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II.
And the Declaration of Elected Office?
I, Kenneth F. Dear, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, execute the office of councillor to which I have been elected in this municipality, that I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any partiality or malversation or other undue execution of such office, and that I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, as required by and in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act 1972. And I make this solemn declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Would you sign the oath and the Declaration, please? Congratulations. Ladies and gentlemen, your councillor has now been duly sworn into office. As a member of this community, I wish them well.
I'll now call upon Father Joseph A. Nolan, pastor of Our Lady of the Airways Church, to bless the municipality. Father Nolan?
Good and holy Father, we, Your people, have tonight gathered to witness those we have chosen from among ourselves, taking up on our behalf the solemn duties and affairs of our great city, Mississauga. Grateful for the inspiration that has brought us together, may we be mindful that all our days are Your gift. May we honour You and bring credit to our diverse religious heritages by the way in which we do our work and discharge our responsibilities. Grant that our esteem and love for You may show itself in respect for the work and dignity of others. You have given us life. Give us also, we pray, wisdom and strength to meet the experiences life brings. Vanish the fears and anxieties that make us hesitant. Increase our confidence in You, in ourselves. Give us courage to stand firm for what is true, what is good, as best we can see it. Make us more willing to sacrifice personal comfort and privilege for the sake of the common good. Bless us, kind Father, rich and poor, learned and simple, noble and humble, powerful and weak, famous and obscure, sinners and saints. Bless us all. Bless us all. Amen.
Now that we have a new councillor, there are a number of guests in the audience who wish to bring greetings from other governments and other levels of governments, and we're pleased to have them with us here this evening. First of all, may I introduce the Honourable Tony Abbott, Member of Parliament for Mississauga, Minister of State for Small Business and Minister of National Revenue. Mr. Abbott.
Your Worship, councillors, distinguished members of the bench, ladies and gentlemen, I want to say how grateful I am to be here in this very impressive ceremony in front of so many people. I think it's a wonderful thing to see a new councillor and a new mayor take their oaths of office in front of so many of their fellow citizens, and certainly I'm glad to be among them. I took an oath of office a couple of weeks ago as Minister of Revenue, and it was held in a small study, and I'm rather glad that I didn't have to read out among 400 people that word, "malversation," and... That was pretty good. Not one of them stumbled on it. But I'm looking forward at my... In the time ahead to joining with the Members of the council and my friend Hazel in the exercise of our duties, both representing the people of Mississauga. I couldn't let a time go by without saying how much I've enjoyed the opportunities I've had to attend functions with Molly and Ron Searle, who I think we all owe a debt of gratitude for great service they've rendered to this community, so... So on behalf, if I may, as Member of Parliament, on behalf of the Government of Canada, I'd like to congratulate you all and wish you a very fruitful period of office. Thank you. I indicated at the outset that we had three Members of the Legislative Assembly here this evening. One of them is bringing greetings this evening, Mr. Bud Gregory, who's a Member of the Legislative Assembly for Mississauga East. Mr. Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your Worship, honoured sirs, reverend sirs, Members of council, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. It gives me double pleasure to be here this evening, to take part in this very beautiful occasion. Firstly, because I have the honour to represent the Premier of Ontario, Premier William Davis, to bring greetings to the Mayor and the new councillor, the City of Mississauga. Premier Davis, as you know, has a special affection for Mississauga. I think one of those reasons is he has three provincial members here, that doesn't hurt. Secondly, is that this area was once a part of his riding. He represented all of Mississauga. At that time, I believe it was called Peel South. Was it wrong, is that correct? The second reason I'm so delighted to be here is not too many years ago, I had the pleasure of standing and attempting to say "pecuniary" myself. I still haven't learned to say it, as Tony said, "malversation." I had no problem with Tony. But I can recognise what the councillors were going through and indeed are going to go through. It's no easy task to represent in a proper fashion the people of Mississauga at a council level. There are always differences, but one thing I do wish to assure the Mayor and the Members of council is the continued cooperation of those representatives at the provincial level of the province of Ontario.
I understand that Mr. Lou Parsons, Chairman of the Region of Peel, is now with us. Mr. Parsons?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, your worship, Reverend clergy, honourable sirs, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate very much the invitation to be here this evening and bring greetings from the balance of regional council, those members who aren't from Mississauga. I also appreciate the fact that having only thirty-six hours left to go in a career, you're lucky to get invited anywhere. If the Star article is right tonight, something's like an all candidate tonight. I ran into Mayor Clarkson in Calladon, which is where I've just come from, and Iver McMullin was there, and I think Terry Miller's here, so you remember those all candidates meetings? I guess tonight's the night. To get serious, from having served on Mississauga council, had the opportunity of serving the citizens of Ward Two as councillor and latterly as Reeve, I understand the onerous duties that the people here this evening are taking on. I say to the new members of council who are coming on for the first time, it's a golden opportunity to serve your community and to establish friendships that will be lasting friendships through many years of life, and I'm sure you'll enjoy the service to your people. To Mayor McCallion, I pledge my cooperation, I hope beyond thirty-six hours, or two years and thirty-six hours if all goes well on Thursday, and I'm sure that much can be accomplished for the good of the citizens, not only of Mississauga but of the total appeal. So, to the council and citizens of Mississauga, on behalf of the council of the Regional Municipality of Peel, I bring greetings. Thank you.
If you look carefully at your program, this item is called "Greetings from Senior Levels of Government." Nevertheless, we will call upon Mr. Terry Miller, the acting mayor of Brampton, to bring greetings from that community as well. Mr. Miller?
Madam Mayor, honoured guests, ladies and gentlemen, and ladies and gentlemen of the council, I am pleased to be here today and tonight representing the City of Brampton at your inaugural meeting. I am happy to bring you best wishes from our citizens and our council, because as your neighbours in Peel, we share so many of the problems common to our urban area. I would like to commend your past city councils for their perseverance, good judgment, and commitment to their job. I predict that this council will continue in that tradition, and I offer the friendship, the cooperation, and the goodwill of our council and the people of the City of Brampton. Thank you very much.
At this time, there are a number of presentations to be made, and to make the first one, I would call upon our new mayor, Hazel McCallion.
I would like the former mayor, Ron Searle, to come forward, please. It is customary in the city, or we started back in nineteen seventy-four, or suggested, that a picture of the mayor be hung in City Hall. Unfortunately, to date, I believe Dr. Dobkin is in the audience, you have not been hung as yet. So, I thought tonight we'd hang two mayors. But effective immediately, I've asked that the two pictures be placed in a very special place in City Hall, because I believe that the citizens of our municipality and those visiting our municipality should have the opportunity and really the privilege to view those who have offered themselves as head of the municipality over the years. So, Ron, on behalf of the former council and the citizens of Mississauga, I'd like to present to you this very nice picture, I've had a look at it, of yourself, which will be immediately, along with Dr. Dobkin's, hung in the City Hall. Would you like to come forward? As a souvenir of your term of office as mayor of the City of Mississauga, I'm happy to present to you the gavel to serve as a souvenir of the years, not only as mayor, but the many other years that you've served the municipality as councillor. Congratulations. And in addition to that, a flag of our great city that I'm sure that you will pride over the many years. I'm not sure you'll fly it from a flagpole, because it's far too precious with this gold tag.
Michelle Starr has some roses to present to Mrs. McCallion's sister, Mrs. Linda Adams. Mrs. McCallion has another sister in the audience this evening as well, and we have roses for her to be presented by Erin Mahoney, Mrs. Gwen Capener. Erin? And Mary's brother Matthew has roses to present to Mrs. Allen. Wendy Starr also has roses to present to Mrs. Sharp. And Wendy Starr also has roses to present to Mrs. Sharp. Mr. Searle in the audience tonight is his wife Molly, and Kathy Cooper has roses to Martha Rufford has a presentation to make to Mrs. McCallion. Martha? And Trina Lenick also has a presentation to make to Mrs. McCallion. Part of these ceremonies this evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. McCallion and the representatives of various youth organizations, scouts and guides and their teams and so on, and they have come here this evening and sat through these proceedings, and I would like all of them, if they would please, to come up, guides and various teams and so on, and they have come here this evening and sat through these proceedings, and I would like all of them, if they would please, to come up here onto the platform where they can be seen and acknowledged. Maybe just come right up here, would you? Thank you very much, kids. Great. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I'm sure that in the very long history of municipal institutions to which I alluded in my opening remarks, never has an inaugural meeting of council been addressed by one so young and so charming as our speaker this evening. Gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce our guest speaker this evening, a grade thirteen student and president of the Students' Council at Irrendale Secondary School, Miss Angela Bax. Angela?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, your worship, Mayor McCallion, councillors, honourable sirs, reverend sirs, and fellow Mississaugians. Before I launch into this address, I'd like to formally thank Mayor McCallion for giving me this opportunity and honour to speak here tonight. Thank you, Mayor McCallion. Look, over there, in the right-hand corner, can you see it? It's a mirage, an image of my dream of Mississauga. And over there, down near the floor, yes, there, it's an illusion of hope for Mississauga. Isn't that what the future of Mississauga is all about? Hopes and dreams hazily outlined in the corners of our minds? Mississauga, wow, it's amazing. Our city skipped the years of the terrible twos, the tremulous threes, and flew right into the terrific fours. No growing pains for Mississauga. We are a frontier city, part of a westward movement into the fresh country air, open spaces, unique development, and into a young, vibrant, growing city. I suppose that you thought the only frontier left was space. Well, you, as a part of this city, have pioneered into an unexplored area and joined together with those of us who came first, and here we are in present-day Mississauga. My future in Mississauga started six years ago, and what is now my past, rich with knowledge, opportunity, and good times that Mississauga has given to me. My family and I moved into Aaron Mills to start a new phase in our future. As a twelve-year-old girl, I was both excited beyond words and scared silly. But I ask you now to put yourselves down, just a few years, into the shoes of a twelve-year-old, and imagine the delight and excitement that the discovery of an isolated wooded creek with a swimming hole can produce. Yes, it's there, and it remains a favourite haunt of mine. Mulligan Creek, a real-life nature spot on Mississauga Road. That experience conferred my suspicions. Mississauga was just great. School, it's an experience that we all know, but school in Mississauga is fantastic. The Board of Education sets high standards, and as a result, we, the students, receive the best and most incredibly talented teachers. Does it make a difference? Yes. In Irrendale Secondary, as in all other schools in Mississauga, the teachers are the vital link between knowledge and the student, and between the student and life in general. I have a very high admiration for the select group of people who can give so much of themselves to us, the students. It is because of these super teachers, they are a breed of their own, that all young people have a bright and glowing horizon as students. Look at the academic records of Mississauga schools. Why, just two weeks ago, the teachers organized a grade twelve reception for all grade twelve honor grads from Irrendale. They invited our parents and all our teachers to witness the spectacular gathering of ninety-five honor grads from my school alone. Not only are the figures sensational, but it was the feeling of being exceptional and powerful that I and my fellow students received as we shook hands and accepted our award. Athletic programs in all Mississauga schools are extensive and amazingly so for the high school level. The coaches again provide the student athletes with confidence and skill, but we are not only taught things such as how to play the game and how to win. The spirit of sportsmanship becomes a very important area of development. Let's play the game, and let's play fair, and we'll all win because we all had fun. On November eleventh, Santa Claus came to Mississauga. Knowing that we all love Santa Claus, I know you can understand the tremendous impact this funny, fat old man directed at everyone in his honorary parade. Many schools of both the high school and public school level were sponsored by different organizations to create a float for this gala affair, and again, the schools came out in style. Our school was inspired into recreating the Wizard of Oz, but we called it the Wizard's Christmas. We made a thirty-foot-tall castle, a yellow brick road, weird and Oz-like structures, and went wholeheartedly into the parade, having a wonderful riot waving at all the children and the parents who cheered and shouted us on. It was a terrific show of the talent and enthusiasm that runs wild in Mississauga's atmosphere. Now that I've inspired those of you in the audience who are post-graduates to go back to school, I'll go on. Patriotism may originate in schools where in athletic meetings, while teams battle out the game, each school tries to outshout the other, but it extends much farther than that. Mississauga has a proud and lengthy record of successful athletes who have given us almost more pride than we can handle. Think of John Wood from the Dynamite Mississauga Canoe Club, who won a silver medal in the seventy-six Summer Olympics. Mississauga's future is even brighter, because fitness and athletics of every type are prominent in our society. I am proud to know people who ski for the Ontario Divisional Ski Team and others who are track and field champions in all of Canada. These people are from Mississauga. The list is endless. Mississauga Parks and Recreation, I'd like to congratulate you for all that you have offered to the public, and it is with pride that I can claim to be a part of the recreation system in being a swimming instructor. My swimming buddies will testify that Mississauga sets high requirements to meet, higher standards than in most cities. But we need more. The facilities of Mississauga haven't been able to grow with the population. The libraries of Mississauga, although very extensive, cannot supply the enormous influx of students that have streamed into our city. As of yet, Aaron Mills lacks a As of yet, Arundel Mills lacks a public pool for its residents, and speaking from the point of view from the fishy side of human nature, I hope it comes soon. There are a lot of water bugs who have to travel quite far for a wet lesson in swimming. Mississauga's future has lots of room for these additions, and I am confident that they will be developed before people have lost hope. Houses, people, and more houses. I nearly fell over in blue shock when I came home from my summer job up north to discover whole-new developments. Technology is amazing. A house can literally spring from the ground faster than a weed can grow. When I contemplate my future dream for Mississauga, I don't see as many houses. What can we offer to all these people? They should come and live here, adventure out of bigger cities, but isn't it going too fast? Commercial development can't keep up with it. These people need jobs, they need after-work entertainment, yet all a large suburb gives them is a sleeping unit. It's like a huge apartment. Now, Mississauga hasn't reached that stage yet, but beware, tomorrow or the next day, it may just happen. We have got commercial development, and it too is expanding, but it can be compared to the race between the tortoise and the hare. I only hope that this particular race ends up to be a tie. Much of the commercialism of the retail type needs more individualism. We need the tiny, exclusive stores that lend a character to Mississauga. Despite the efficiency of the large department stores, it can't be ignored that personal appeal and distinction is lost. How many small businessmen do we have in Mississauga? Free press, free speech, and free enterprise, let's push that. Of course, the large corporations should be enticed to come into our city, but we can't exclude the small, profitable organizations either. As a young person of Mississauga, I would like to say that we are aware of what is happening. We are concerned with what will amount to be our city. Right now, the capable generation of our parents are controlling our destiny as a city, and I am very confident of their ability because it is, after all, these same people who have developed us to be aware, concerned, and active in our city. But I have one question that must be answered soon. Where is Mississauga? Do we have a core, a city center, where the heartbeat can emanate from? What controls our metabolism as a city? Where is Mississauga's museum? Where is the main drag? The place to be? This is the one vital blaze that has not been ignited. There are tiny flames in every corner of Mississauga. Let's take those flames and construct a real bonfire that will never be extinguished. But guess what, fellow Mississaugians? There will be a downtown, Mississauga. The major city plan has accounted for this particular and crucial development, and this in itself will affect our city's future most dynamically. Of course, we as citizens have to support this idea. So let's go, Mississauga, let's give our city a beat. Let's combine the separate spirits of Port Credit, Streetsville, Clarkson, Lorn Park, Cooksville, Irondale, Arundel Mills, Meadowvale, and many more distinctive communities, mix them up in a huge cauldron, and let the unique blend, the spirit of Mississauga, emerge. He is there, this spirit, but we have to put him together. To expand on Mississauga's future, I'd like to assess the character of Mississauga. Sounds like an English assignment, I know, but it's very applicable. Mississauga combines the qualities of an eccentric, unique old man and a bouncing, lively, experimenting teenager. The old man has age-old memories, a history of events that give depth and background to Mississauga, a strong, sturdy base upon which to build a future. This old man remembers places like the Credit River. Oh, you say, it's the same as always, and it is that enduring quality which gives to the future. A friend and I went cross-country skiing one day down the Credit River, starting at the Mississauga Road Bridge, and we met an old Dutchman who had skied all the way up from Port Credit. It was an experience I can't forget. The young and the old meeting, enjoying the same activity, perfect strangers at once friends. This too is the future of Mississauga, and everyone has gazed in wonder and fondness at the Mizinki Suppository Room that adds a certain spicy flavor to Mississauga. The other face of Mississauga is the excitable young teenager who explores the old and who revels in the new. Cable ten TV is a new facet of Mississauga that determines our culture, that communicates with all Mississaugians, as does our own radio station. Picture this exploring youth, creating Mississauga's future. Did you know that the Peel Regional Police are the friendliest and most approachable law enforcement body? I happened to meet and talk to one such constable. They are, really. I happened to meet and talk to one of your members over at a dance that our Student Council held this past weekend. Just a dynamite man, an example of a person... He was an example of a person who loves people, who can communicate with people, and who enjoys his job, who enjoys a life in Mississauga, another super future of our city. My dream for the city of Mississauga takes shape as an atmosphere, to learn in, to grow in, to work and to enjoy life in. Mississauga offers me, as a young person, the opportunity to become an individual, to explore all areas of adventurous life. Mississauga has a future that is the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow. Through the days, through the months and years, we will reach each sparkling nugget. Thank you, Mississauga, for the nuggets I have already stored away in my past, and please join me, fellow Mississaugians, in a march towards a shining future. The future is what we make it. Mississauga. Here's to Mississauga and the future of our dreams, hopes, and accomplishments. We have a lot to cheer for and a lot more to come. Thank you.
Angela, that was just a super speech, and I think that the new council have received a blueprint for the next two years free of charge. That's quite an act to follow, and Mrs. McCallion has no one to blame but herself for extending the invitation. Thank you ever so much, Angela. Now, to introduce Mrs. McCallion, of course, I could go on for a great deal of time, but I know that we would rather hear her than hear me. Like so many of you here this evening, I have heard Mrs. McCallion speak on a number of occasions, and I think it's fair to say that she has seldom had a loss for words, unless perhaps in the language of her native gasp. We all know, of course, that some people who are never at a loss for words can speak quite eloquently and at great length and say nothing, but whenever Mrs. McCallion speaks, she has ideas and opinions to express, particularly on local issues or on broader issues which have a bearing on the local municipality. Whether you agree or whether you disagree with her, you can't help but think about and react to her ideas and opinions, and for this reason, I know we are all looking forward to her inaugural remarks this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, a great deal of pleasure to introduce her worship, Mayor Hazel McCallion.
Thank you, Fraser. First of all, I would like to express some thanks, first of all, to the audience for coming here tonight and joining with us in what I consider a very special night in my life, and I'm sure in the life of our members of council. I don't know, I hope you didn't feel the taking of the oath of office and allegiance to the Queen was too long, but it was a special request of mine that my council be individually sworn into office. I think it's an important night for them, and I hope that they too enjoyed it. I hope I don't forget anybody, but I do want to express my sincere thanks to the Mississauga Symphony. We're very proud of the symphony. I think, Angela, it is one step forward that we've taken to become a... I'd like to express my sincere thanks to the two judges. Judge Ward Allen, I don't know if you realize, but he served the town of Streetsville for twenty-one years, and that is why I invited him, and also served as our solicitor when I had the privilege of being mayor of the town of Streetsville. So we welcome you, Ward, back to Mississauga now because we are a part of this great city, and to Judge Bill Sharp, of course, who is a resident of my community for many years and has served the town of Streetsville as well as the city of Mississauga. So we say thank you to the two judges. We really are honored tonight to have them with us. And of course, to the clergy. Fortunately, Rabbi Englander had to leave. I think it's so important that the very foundation of Mississauga is the very many churches that we have. On Saturday, I had the privilege of joining in the opening of a congregation of the Seventh Day Adventists, and I think Mississauga is rich because of the religious foundation that we have in our city and the many churches, and we say thank you to you for joining with us tonight in the inaugural ceremony. Now, I'm going to miss somebody, so I'm just going to say thank you to all those who participated in this very important ceremony, especially to the young people, and of course, last but not least, to Angela, that I think painted a picture for all of us, that we'll long remember, Angela, for many years to come, and it's so good that a young person, representative of our community, ladies and gentlemen, you may be looking at a future mayor of Mississauga. Now, I'd like to introduce some people to you that are my important, are very essential to the operation of a community, and especially to the city of Mississauga. They are the people that are seldom out front because they're back at the office doing the work, and I would tonight like to introduce to you the city staff, the department heads and the commissioners that are with us tonight. I hope I don't miss anybody, it's hard to see from here, but I will start with our city manager, Mr. Ed Halliday. Ed? I would appreciate if you would withhold your applause so we can do it quickly. I know they're all important. Next to Ed is Mr. William Taylor, Commissioner of Engineering. Next is Mr. Ed Dolling, our manager of our famous Mississauga Transit. Mr. Russ Edmonds, our Commissioner of Planning. Next to Russ is Mr. Joe Miller, our Fire Chief. Next is Mr. Terry Julian, our City Clerk. Mr. Bill Mundon, our City Treasurer. Mr. Lynn Stewart, our City Solicitor. Mr. Lyle Love, our Commissioner of Recreation and Parks. Mr. David Bray, our Director of Personnel. Mr. Don Ogilvy, our Commissioner of Finance. Mr. Keith Cowan, our Commissioner of Building. Have I missed anybody, Ed? Bill Mundon, our Treasurer, I introduced him. I don't think I... Pardon? Oh, Jim Cakey, oh, how could I ever forget Jim Cakey? The reason I've forgotten him is because he organized the whole thing. I'm not going to attempt to introduce, I think Angela spoke on behalf of Peel Regional Police and spoke very well, and some of the commissioners are here tonight as well as members, but there is one person I would like to introduce, and maybe because it's close to home, but Inspector William Snar, Superintendent Snar. He's, he just left our community and started over again twelve. And Inspector Taggart is with us. Deputy Chief, oh yeah, he's the big boy. Anyway, I'm going to miss a few people if I start introducing regional. Lou, I'll leave that to you if you happen to win it next Thursday. Is Mr. Noel Ryan in the audience, our librarian? No. Now, another, last but not least, I would like to introduce to you a group that, in my opinion, have played a very major role in my life and have really been a real asset and support to me for the ten years that I have served in public office, and I now would like to introduce my husband, Sam. My daughter Linda. Where are you, Linda? I guess there I better say "our." Our son Peter. And last but not least, my baby, our son Paul. He's taller than I am. But I want to say publicly that they have been a great asset to me and support and very understanding as I assume the office over the years and now as mayor of Mississauga. As I said, thought tonight, I've just taken on one big family, the residents of the city of Mississauga. What are my hopes for seventy-nine and eighty? First of all, I promised and I will fulfill my promise of responsible civic spending. Value for your tax dollar. I will attempt, and with the cooperation of the council that you've elected, to control your taxes and to keep the services from being reduced. We will promote and will be top priority, commercial and industrial development for our city because, as Angela has said, we have grown rather quickly residentially, and so now it is our chief responsibility to make sure that our industrial and commercial assessment starts to catch up with the residential development, not only to provide the tax revenue that we need so badly in order to provide the services, but to provide jobs for our young people and for the adults of Mississauga. I believe that industrial development, and I would like to say this to the three members of Parliament representing Mississauga, I want residential development to come home to Mississauga where it should be, and I ask you to carry this message to Queen's Park. I believe that there has to be changes in regional government. I believe that there has to be changes in regional government. I think it's costing too much, and I don't believe that Mississauga is getting a fair shake. When you think of the fact that we pick up 70% of the tab, I think the time has come, members of Parliament, that we have more than 50% of the save. And so during 1979... With the support of the council, I believe those changes have to occur. I promised to develop, and I hope that it will occur very shortly, a Mississauga Tourist and Convention Bureau. I believe we have grown up, and I don't feel that we need the services of metropolitan Toronto in this regard. I promised a task force on building deficiencies. And that I hope to get started very shortly after the first of the year. To determine what is needed to give better protection for the purchasers of new homes. It is the largest investment they will ever make in their life, and I believe it is the responsibility of the city council to make sure, make sure, that we do protect them because they do look to us for protection. To the federal government, Mr. Abbott, as Minister of Revenue, we will be happy to accept, not necessarily a park, but the equivalent of the money that the federal government donated to the city of Toronto a few years ago. With the development that we have accepted in the city, I think you are fully aware of the fact that we need financial assistance to look after the people that come out of the houses. And Mr. Abbott, another little thing I would like you to accomplish this year. And it's a very simple thing, and in fact, I don't think it takes too many public meetings or anything to accomplish it. And I think the time has come that you'll change the name of the Toronto International Airport to the Mississauga International Airport. I just thought with having all these distinguished guests in our audience tonight, that we should take advantage of... As well as give them something to do. Ladies and gentlemen, and now to the council. I looked up the dictionary tonight, members of council, to find out what the definition of a leader was and the many ways in which it can be expressed. They are a conductor, a captain, a guide, a pilot, a shepherd, a standard bearer. And to my council, I pledge that I will endeavor to fulfill all those roles on your behalf. I believe that we need and we are going to work towards, and I want to pledge to the new hospital board, my full support in bringing a second hospital to our city. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to say that I look forward to what I would call teamwork in '79 and '80. And I believe that with the sta- staff that I just had the pleasure to introduce to you, the department heads and the commissioners, and with all those many people that serve under them, and with the council that you have elected, that in 1979 and '80, we will work as a team. And that I will endeavor to the very best of my ability and energy to provide the leadership that is required to make the teamwork work for the betterment of this great city of Mississauga. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for the honor and the privilege to serve as your mayor. I promise you that with God's help, that at the end of two years, that I will truly fulfill the promise that I made to you all, that I will be a mayor for the people of Mississauga. So that promise I give to you tonight, and with the cooperation of my council, I hope that in the next two years, that Mississauga will take a great step forward in developing as a city that cares for its people. Because really, a community is only as great as the people who make up the community. And so I pledge to you my full energy and ability to serve as your servant during '79 and '80. Thank you very much for coming, and I hope that we will see you all participating in the activities of our city because really, there's a job for you to do too. And that is, we must all work together to make sure that Mississauga becomes a place that is safe for us to live in, that is good for us to live in, and that our children will say thank you to the contribution that we've made to make our city great. Thank you for a gain, for the privilege and honor to serve you. And with your help, we will all go forth and fulfill the dreams of our young people, such as Angela expressed tonight. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, that was another super speech. And we want to thank Hazel very, very much for bringing these timely remarks to us at the beginning of her administration in Mississauga. I mentioned when I introduced her that we had often heard her speak. I think the other occupation she has is dropping pucks at the beginning of hockey matches. And did you notice how deftly she stick-handled around the representatives of provincial and federal government on our behalf? Thank you very much, Hazel. Also, before we conclude this ceremony this evening, I want to express to Mrs. McCallion the appreciation of all of us who have assisted in this program this evening. It's been certainly an honor for her to have extended the invitation to us to take part on this great occasion. At this time, Mr. Gordon Lassard will sing the Lord's Prayer, and immediately following, Reverend Earl S. Coulter, Minister of First United Church of Port Credit, will pronounce the benediction. And now go in peace, and may the blessing of God Almighty, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, rest upon you and abide with you always. Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, following the Queen, you are invited to the school cafeteria for refreshments and for an opportunity to meet this evening's guests. School cafeteria is through these doors and just to your right. Ladies and gentlemen, the Queen.